Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the May 6 regular meeting and swearing-in ceremony of our commissioners. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Present.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance process?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner McDowell, would you lead us in prayer this evening?
I'd be happy to, thank you. Father, I want to thank you for the many blessings we receive from you, and we know that when you bless us, there's a reason for it, so that your name might be known in all the earth, your salvation among all nations. So we pray for our newly re-elected commissioners, for Christopher Fisher and Richard Fryerson. Thank you for their service to our community, and we pray that you would bless them in these next four years of service to our city. Pray, Lord, that you would keep all of us safe. Thank you for the work that you have laid out before us, and we pray that you would help us to do this to the best of our ability, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McDowell. Item number four, are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number five is citizens' comments. We only have one person listed on citizens' comment at this point, Mary Lou Hildebrand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. During the month of April, the Estes volunteers gave $95 hours of service for a value to the city of $3,182. We provided traffic blockage for a certain event at D.V.E.'s school. We performed a monthly sirens test and held our monthly meeting. We assisted the park district at the Easter egg hunt and assisted faithfully in students from ZBTHS on Earth Day for a cleanup of Rosa Park. We assisted at the food pantry held at ZBEE's parking lot, as well as performing duties to maintain the center and equipment. If you're interested in being a positive force in Zion, please consider joining our team. Applications can be found on the city website or obtained from Estes members. Thank you for your continued support.
All right, thank you, Mary Lou, and thank you to the Estes crew. The weather's getting better for you now, too. Thank goodness.
Yes, and everybody's finally here.
Yes. All right, item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on April 15, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. Approval would not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on April 15, 2025 at 8:04 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Stackhouse, second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip.
Bills, vouchers 143097 through 143195 drawn on 102 National Bank, total $1,209,530.17.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Stackhouse. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven is their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by McDowell and second by Fisher, echoed by Stackhouse and Fryerson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, see you later.
I guess who would say that? Daffy Duck would say "not so fast." For those of who remember Daffy Duck. So now we have the administrative, an administration of oath of office by our newly re-elected commissioners, Christopher Fisher, our Commissioner of Finance and Mayor Pro Tempt, and Richard Fryerson, our Commissioner of Building Property and Zoning. After the meeting, we will have cookies and water for everyone that is here, and then we will have our regular city council meeting after the administration of oath of office. All right, Commissioner Fisher, will you step forward?
Repeat after me. Hi, Christopher Fisher.
Hi, Christopher Fisher.
Having been elected to the office of?
Having been elected to the office of?
Commissioner in the City of Zion.
Commissioner in the City of Zion.
And the office of?
And the office of?
Trustee in the Zion Township.
Trustee in the Zion Township.
In the County of Lake.
In the County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois?
Of the State of Illinois.
That I will, that I will enforce the laws of?
That I will enforce the laws of?
The City of Zion?
The City of Zion.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of said office?
The duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
You can't get away with a diddly.
I'll get your guy.
Okay. Does it doesn't work? Uh, yeah, it does. All right. Again, on the Bible study.
I, Richard Fryerson.
I, Richard Fryerson.
Having been elected to the office of?
Having been elected to the office of?
Commissioner in the City of Zion.
Commissioner in the City of Zion.
And the office of?
And the office of?
Trustee?
Trustee.
In the Township of Zion.
In the Township of Zion.
In the County of Lake.
In the County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois?
Of the State of Illinois.
That I will enforce the laws of?
That I will enforce the laws of?
The City of Zion.
The City of Zion.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office?
The duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
All right.
Yeah, and then a different one for Instagram.
Once again, I welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the May 6 Zion City Council meeting, and you just witnessed the swearing-in ceremony of our re-elected commissioners. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Present.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Fledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner McDowell, would you care to lead us in prayer?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that again.
Since you're a good friend to wife, that means if we get in trouble this week, we're good, huh?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so this is, yeah, double blessing.
Yes.
Father, we do want to come before you, and we're thankful that, we recognize your control over all the earth, and, Father, thank you for the things that you've been doing in our lives, making us to be faithful servants of yours and of the residents of the City of Zion. Pray, Lord, that you would continue to strengthen and sustain us, and help us to do the work to the best of our ability, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell. Item number four is agenda changes. Any other commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse, echoed by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, citizens' comments. Any?
No new ones.
No new city comments, citizens' comments? All right, let's move on with item number six, is considering passing resolutions as follows. 6A for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the utilization of MFT funds for the design, engineering, and construction observation of the Galilee Avenue FAUSTP resurfacing road program per Director Roberts.
Excer. Attached to required IDOT resolution for utilization of MFT funds for the design, engineering, and construction observations of Galilee Avenue resurfacing program. Services will include the observation of construction process, quality of the executed work, and determination if the work is proceeding in accordance with the contract documents. Staff request, I recommend approving the IDOT resolution for the expenditure of $146,500 from the MFT fund. Funding for this project is a budgeted item within fiscal year 26 MFT budget.
All right, is there a motion? Motion by Stackhouse?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments from the commissioners? We're going to get a mile and a half, right?
Yes, sir.
And it's, when does the project start, and where, and which end of the Galilee we start from?
Again, you're covering my director's.
All right, well, hold off. We don't want you to lose that valuable breath that you have there, right?
I appreciate that.
We'll wait for citizen, uh, departmental commentary. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven, consider passing ordinances follows, authorizing and approval of the renewal of an aggregation program for electrical load per Mayor McKinney. Let me get my paperwork out here. For some of you that were here last, our last city council meeting in April, Sharon Derling from the Illinois Aggregation Consultants presented some prices for us for aggregation of our services. We've used MC Square Energy Services for the last several years, and she recommended that we continue to use MC Square Energy Services, going with option two, which would net the city over a two-year period from a civic conservation, contribution to the city of about $50,000. The COMED rate, and they have a COMED price match rate, and this includes for the 20, 12 to 24-month period. COMED's rate right now, their supply rate is 6.552 cents per kilowatt per hour, but that's expected to rise on June 1st, and we don't know what that price is going to be. And the other reason option two was selected, because none of the other companies, energy companies, made bids. Dynergy Energy and Constellation New Energy did not make any bids for the services. So our recommendation is go with the option two, with the COMED might, uh, COMED price match for 12 to 24-month term with MC Square Energy Services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell and second by Stackhouse? Any questions or comments?
Um, is that motion for the 12-month or 24-month period?
24-month. 24-month. We did the 12-month last year, and due to the uncertainty of the rates rising, we decided to go with the 24-month. Any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven B, authorizing and approving a proposal for construction engineering services from Christopher Burke Engineering LTD for the 20th Street Storm Improvement Project per Director Roberts.
Say again, sir. Attached to proposal for the construction observation of engineering services from the Phase 1 of the 20th Street Storm Improvement Project. Boundary to Phase 1 are from Gideon Avenue from 20th Street to the north limit, which definitely be viewed apart as the outfall for the storm line. Services will include the observation and construction process, quality of execution of work, determination of work proceeding in accordance with contract documents, and preparation and submitter of required grant funding documents. Additional services include preparing bid docs and bid reward recommendations. Construction observation is composed of two parts. Storm system upgrade, estimated cost of $220,000 grant funded and reimbursable. Water and sewer, water and sanitary main replacement, estimated at a cost of $81,115 going to be locally funded. Staff request, I recommend approving proposal for construction observation and engineering services, services from Christopher Burke Engineering for a cost of $301,115. The service is included as a budgeted item within the fiscal year 26 water.
All right, is there a motion to approve the proposal for construction engineering services from Christopher Burke Engineering?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions, comments from any of our commissioners? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven C, authorizing and approving a local public agency engineering agreement for resurfacing Galilee Avenue per Director Roberts.
Say again? Attached to the required IDOT local public agency engineering service agreement for the Galilee Avenue FAUSTP resurfacing road program. Agreement is between the cities, IDOT, and Burke Engineering for the project construction engineering operation. Services will include the observation of the construction process, quality of the executed work, and determination of work, determination that the work is proceeding in accordance with contract documents. Staff request, I recommend approving the local public agency engineering service agreement, estimated construction observation cost of $89,400. This cost has been approved to be fully reimbursable under the FAUSTP program. Funding for this project is a budgeted item within the fiscal year 26 MFT budget.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Stackhouse?
All second.
Second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number seven D, authorizing and approving the disposal of surplus police vehicle property in the Police Department per Chief Barton.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. As we continue to do, we have completed some housekeeping and organizational tasks within the Police Department. We've identified an item of surplus equipment, which generally speak are mainly old, broken, non-serviceable items. Following vehicle have been collected and categorized as surplus due to the cost of repair to maintain it. It's a 2018 Ford Interceptor with the last five of the VIN is 17254. It's got over 118,000 miles on it. We will work with Public Works and administer an able to either set a minimum bid amount if sold, or otherwise dispose of it legally.
All right, is there a motion to authorize and approve the disposal of surplus property?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments by the commissioners?
I did have just one question. Seemed like this was relatively newer and lower mileage for one of our surplus vehicles. Were there special circumstances with this one?
The transmission went on it, and we're getting budget costs now for about $7,000 per transmission, and we had, we had two vehicles, transmissions went on at the same time, and this one was one that was in worse shape. We had a wild decision.
Thank you.
That's a lot of miles in.
A lot of hard miles.
Yeah, in seven years, 118,000. All right, any additional questions? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number eight, discussion, authorization, and approval. 8A is request permission to hire one firefighter, paramedic, and request the name of the next qualified candidate from the Fire and Police Commission eligibility list, and request to promote the next eligible firefighter, paramedic to lieutenant per Chief Streed.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Due to the recent retirement announcement of Fire Rescue Lieutenant Tom Bailey effective May 3 of this year, I'm requesting that approval be given to promote the next eligible firefighter, paramedic to lieutenant, and begin the hiring process for the next eligible candidate from our hiring eligibility list. The Fire and Police Commission approved and released the next candidate, candidate on the lieutenant eligibility list at their April 25 special meeting, and had previously released all names from our hiring eligibility list. I'm requesting that firefighter, paramedic Matthew Henby be promoted to lieutenant effective tomorrow, May 7, 2025.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Stackhouse. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item number nine is departmental commentary. Uh, Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just still pretty young, I was still taking applications for the seasonal lawn crew, at the 18-years-old, and I'd like to apply for the season buyer, a 15-year-old to be a real estate cutter, so I'll go ahead and apply, if you're ready to receive a cut.
All right, thank you, Director Ianson. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. As I kind of alluded to, we see from IDOT, April 25, they conducted a letting, the bid process for the Galilee project. Peter Baker and son were the lowest possible bidder at $892,837.79, which is about $4,000 shy at the estimate. So we came in under for that estimate that I provided. We'd like to say that this is 100% paid for by the state in fact. So the city is not being invoiced for any of this. So that was what the approval for was, the construction observation. We will pay that, and then they will 100% reimburse that $90,000 for that construction observation, too. So this project is fully paid 100% on the body of that.
That's great news.
And that's 1.5 miles from 21st Street to 33rd Street. I do not know when the construction date will start. This still has to go through a process of approval through IDOT, which I should anticipate approval for this to be done by the end of May, and then start scheduling probably in June or July, therefore to start meeting that.
And about how long will that take?
Um, they're estimating eight, eight to 10 weeks.
Okay. All right, Galilee getting a, getting a fresh look on it.
Yes.
All right.
Also, I have put out an announcement. If anybody has been traveling west of 94 on 173, they're going to be following this on the ways. They are resurfacing and reconstructing 173 from Uncloped Road to Antioch. That is supposed to take until October of this year.
Wow.
So it would be daily lane closing throughout that route. So if you want to go west, I suggest either run north, or definitely go back.
Okay.
If you want to work out there. So this is the season for construction. I'd like to have everybody pay attention out there when they're driving. There's going to be a lot going on within the city itself, too, and the state has a lot of programs that are starting to kick off out there. Pay attention when they're driving, and you see some people out there with yellow vests and flags, be watching.
All right.
Do what you think you do.
All right, is that it, Director Roberts?
I think I'm done, no.
All right.
So I have a question. So does the city have a preference on which end they start at 33rd or 21st, or do they decide? Oh, city don't?
Be the contractor.
Okay.
They'll, they'll set that up and schedule it.
Thank you.
It's a five-year old, they go.
I was just wondering.
Okay. Usually leave that up. More likely they'll start with concrete work, with concrete work, curving, sidewalk, patching, and then they'll come back down and mow it down and impolish it.
Yeah, and it will complement the work that was done on 31st Street, which, that road was tough to travel up and down for a while, but it's been resurfaced and that connects right there at Lebanon, so, yeah. All right, Chief Streed?
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Just two recognitions tonight. One of them's a little bit solemn. About two weeks ago, a Chicago Fire Department captain responded on a routine garage fire. There was an unexpected change of conditions with the collapse, and he did not make it out. So condolences to the Meyer family and Chicago Fire Department on the loss of one of their firefighters in malady duty. On a happier note, as many of you know, then, what we talked about earlier in that action we took, Lieutenant Tom Bailey retired from Zion Fire Department earlier this week after 30 successful years on our department and working for the city. So congratulations to Tom. He'll be missed, but he put in a career, and he went out on his own terms. So congratulations to Lieutenant Tom Bailey.
All right, thank you, Chief Streed. Chief Barton?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I was listening to Director Ianson's request for employees, and I was thinking back when I worked for the Township at 13-years-old, cutting grass and riding in the back of a pickup truck, which is probably not so accepted anymore, but, you know, times have changed, I guess. So just thinking about that, which was fun back then. But I did want to mention about traffic safety, just right now, in fact, I have officers out on, on 9th Street following a personal injury crash between motorcycles, and it is just that time, when, when things are changing, the weather's getting nicer, people are out on motorcycles or tri motorcycles, I guess if that's what they're called, but they're harder to see.
Just keep your eyes open. People are very, very much on their phones when they're driving now, we gotta get away from that, so. Keep your eyes open on the road, get to where you're going safe and slow, hopefully. That is the goal for most.
Was that 9th and Green Bay or?
Yeah. And I will say thank you to Azza again and Mary Lord and her crew. They, they came out and showed us to help block the roads. We have accident investigators out there surveilling the scene and putting that back together.
Yeah, I want to say a couple of months ago, there was a bad accident there on 9th Street and Green Bay Road. And it's a county road. And a lot of people have asked about the county putting a light there, because it is a tough turn. I go up there to go to Shepherd's Crook sometimes and it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough intersection. It is. So just have to pay attention there. All right, Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you all are probably aware, property tax bills came out recently and there's been a lot of discussion about CJ and the increases in tax bills and things of that nature. So just a reminder, and there's, there's interviews out there on Facebook and ZB Cops page about CJ. And I did a dollars and cents series kind of explaining it all, but the effects of the 75% abatement for CJ will not take effect until 2026's tax bills. So the legislation was passed, however, because of how levies are passed and when they go into effect, that was going to be, that will be implemented for 2026. So for people expecting it to go down this year because of CJ, that's not the case. It's always been 26. That being said, the city did reduce our levy in 2024 based on funds that we had received under CJ from the first year. We're going into year three of the CJ grant, but the funds that we received in the first year, we did reduce our levy for. So pay attention to the lower left of your tax bill, show the breakdown of where all those tax dollars are going to. About 67% of it goes to the high school and the elementary school district combined. So we're, we're about 15% of that tax bill and obviously based on our housing values and stuff, you should see that the city of Zion, if not staying flat, actually reduce compared to prior years. But because we're only 15% of the bill, we can't, we would have to have reduced our levy by four times the amount that we did just to keep even with what increases there were from the high school and the elementary school. So we can't, we can't do it on our own, even if we eliminated our, our taxes altogether, we'd actually still be 35% higher than, than the state average with what would be remaining. So it's a, it's a continued effort from all the taxing bodies to try and figure out how to drive those, those levies down and those costs down over time, but we, we work on it constantly. Progress is slow trying to turn, turn the tide of that, but I just wanted to make sure that the information was presented out there. You hear a lot of, you know, the park district, the schools, the libraries are all separate taxing bodies that we don't have control over. We only have control over our levies that we pass, so. But if you have any questions on that tax bill, feel free to reach out to, to me, the county, or the tax assessor.
Yeah, and we purposely made the effort to try to lead by example when it came to reducing our levies. And if you would explain the levies a little more, we reduced ours so that the property taxes would go down for our residents. One of the things that I've heard over the last 13 years, being back and being part of the city council, was property taxes. And the CJ money that we went out and we were able to secure on behalf of our residents, we made sure that each taxing body had to dedicate 75% of it back for property tax relief. But in that process, each taxing body has to make a decision to lower their levies in order to help offset and lower taxes. And right now, it's my understanding that the Zion Township and the city of Zion were the two entities that lowered their levies. So when it comes to taxes, it's great to see new people at our city council meetings. People have to go out to the schools and, and question them about their levies and continuing to raise their levies as property taxes go out, because property values have also increased in the city of Zion, which is a good thing, you know, in a lot of respects.
If, if I could add to that, I don't want to, I don't want to go too deep into levies and abatements and extensions and all that stuff. There's another dollars and cents session recorded out there if you want to watch all of that, but I just want to say when you hear people talk about tax rates or abatements, be careful what they're talking about there, because a lot of times, the formula is a three-part formula, but basically what affects your taxes is what each of the taxing bodies asks for and collects from the residents. So very high picture here. Think of, think of if you're buying a TV, a thousand-dollar TV, and we get to checkout and they go, hey, we have a special, it's 20% off. Okay, instead of paying a thousand, you're going to pay 800. That 20% is an abatement, is, is the equivalent of a tax abatement. So you levy an amount and you say, hey, we're not going to collect a certain amount of that. Now you go up there and you have a thousand-dollar TV, then they say, hey, we've got 10% off on that, so it's only 900. It was still reduced, but it's still a hundred dollars more than the prior amount. And that's what happens a lot with abatements is, you know, taxing bodies will abate, let's say $2 million, and next year they go, well, we're abating a million, but that's actually a million less than they abated in the prior year. So they're abating money, but they're collecting a million more than they did last year, so taxes go up. So it's, it's very easy to get lost in the nuances of tax rates and abatements. You know, if property values go up, tax rates go down. That has nothing to do with the taxing body, that's just how, how the formula works. So anytime you hear abatements or rate reduction, that's only one-third of the, the true story. Bottom line is what comes out of your pockets that you're paying to the taxing bodies is what's important. And that's why we chose to reduce our levy rather than do abatements and temporary discounts on that. We just straight up reduce the amount that we're asking to be collected. So, you know, technically we're not doing abatements where others are, but that's a good thing, because we're actually just reducing the levy right off the bat. So we're not playing games with those, those kind of numbers. And there's risks associated with that for future increases and things like that that we've discussed many times, but as the mayor said, it was, it was what was intended when the CJ came out and it was the, the right thing to do. So we committed to that and hopefully we'll see more of that as, as the year's going on.
One last item I'd like you to address too is, there's always the discussion amongst some of our residents that, well, if the city brought in more businesses, which we have done over the last six years, we've brought in more business and multi-billion dollar businesses and Real Wheels and some of the new businesses are coming into Trumpet Park. But just could you explain in layman's term, when those businesses come in, their tax dollars are grabbed by those other entities?
So that, yeah, that's a, that's another challenging item to address that goes with taxes, but when we levy, we're allowed to go up by a certain percentage each year. So we can only go up by that amount, what we ask for. But if there was new construction or new businesses, we can add that, the taxes from that onto our levy as well. So let's say we get a million dollars in taxes from what's already there and we can get another 50,000 from a new business. Now we're collecting a million and 50,000. But everybody's still paying, that was paying that million is still paying that million. We're just collecting more revenue. The only way that new business helps reduce taxes is if we don't grab at that 50,000. We say, we're going to live off this million. Now everyone else pays 950 and the new business makes up the difference. So now our tax base has grown and taxes are reduced. What typically happens for a lot of taxing bodies is they grab at that new construction money. So growing and expanding our tax base doesn't reduce the tax burden. And that's the fallacy that's out there, is the city needs to attract new business, which we do and we have, but that will only reduce property taxes if that new construction chunk is essentially passed on by all the taxing bodies. So that's the piece that we have to work on the other side of these taxing bodies is live, live within your means, live off of what you have and let that new development help ease the burden at no cost to us. It's just supplementing, you know, what, what, because that's, that's the reverse of what happened when the power plant closed. That 19 million that they were paying shifted over to everyone else. And now as we expand back, we need to relieve that burden of those new taxes.
All right. Thank you. Administrator Nabel?
Sure.
I think it's night, Mayor. All right.
Just happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there and celebrate, show your mothers some love and looking forward to the winter weather.
Isn't there a run coming up as well, close to Mother's Day?
There is a run this Saturday at Shiloh in Dalvey Circle. I believe check-in time is nine o'clock and the race, maybe check-in is eight. The race starts at nine.
It's a 5K race?
It is a 5K.
Called Mother's Run?
Walk or run.
Yeah. Can we cycle?
It's called Mother's Run, but you can walk or run.
Okay. Skateboard? All right, Commissioner Stackhouse?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you to all of you that come out tonight to visit with us. Good to see you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Just glad to see everybody come out tonight and I just say, I'm looking forward to working with all of you for the next four years.
All right. All right, not much for me. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and thank everyone for, for coming out. And what we try to do here, I see the Bates have been coming on a regular basis. Thank you for, for continuing to come and get some education about what we're trying to do. And of course, if there's any questions that we can answer about questions that you have within the community, you can reach out to any one of us or our department heads to, to get those answers. We're being as transparent as we can about everything that happens within the city. We're continuing to try to make this a great place to live, work, and, and play. And part of that is making sure that we continue to do what's necessary to work with the other taxing bodies to help them understand the importance of reducing their levy so that property taxes can go down, especially in this time in our country when prices are going sky-high with other things. So thank you for coming out tonight. And we move to item number 10, which is announcements. On May 20th, at 6:00 PM, we have a Zion Township Board meeting right here and followed by a Zion City Council meeting at 7:00 PM. And of course, we have Mother's Day coming up this next weekend and the Mother's Run, which starts at nine o'clock, would be there at eight o'clock to check in. May 24th, at 9:00 AM, the Elite Striders, who have been world championship, world championship material here, they have an event starting at Central Middle School at nine o'clock on May...
Ten.
Ten o'clock?
Ten.
Nine, yes.
Ten o'clock.
Nine Mountain Time. Ten Central Standard Time. Thank you. Ten, ten o'clock here. They've been an important part of our mu, uh, community with our young adults being involved and they've won world titles. And we've been supporting them for, for years, trying to get our youngsters involved in productive activities that represent the community in a productive way.
Mayor, we had eight states represented last year.
Eight states?
Eight states sent teams and a couple of states have got more than one team.
And they came from Missouri and different places. That was one of the events they had at the high school, so follow our Elite Striders. They do a terrific job. At May 26th, city offices are closed for Memorial Day. And item number 11, there are a motion to adjourn. So moved. All right, motion by McDowell and a second by Fireson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye. One second.
You know, by Robert's rule of order, I live here like, you know, to go to the Beth Village, you know, and I just, I had a suggestion, you know, my name, my name's Tim Alfrink and I had a suggestion, you know, possibly for, for, you know, making, you know, for our community. You know, I, I know what the religious premises of the village and everything, but I think it'd be in, in the village's best interest to possibly research, like what kind of like money some of our communities are making from dispensaries. But we have a lot of land and everything and, and an old building on the other side of the railroad tracks and, and kind of stuff that we can't do anything because of the duke. And, and possibly my idea was, you know, like with, with the problem with the schools and everything, I was thinking, you know, if, if we were allowed to get dispensaries and, and possibly, you know, like a big man, you know, like somebody that manufactured grew marijuana, you know, not that I'm a huge marijuana, you know, activist or whatever, but I'm just saying, if with the marijuana portion of the tax, if 75% of, of that tax base went towards the school district, this is, is something that could help our, our, you know, community for decades. And then like, there's another problem. My home's over by, which I'm not currently in, but I'm rehabbing, there's a, you know, over by Sharon Park. There's a huge problem with, you know, you know, just from me walking around our community and everything, the bike path over on the south end by the old Ford dealership is, is like there's, throughout the creeds and everything, erosion is a huge problem. But I mean, like what I was thinking is if 12 and a half percent of the money from just the marijuana portion went towards like the parks and then 12 and a half percent went towards the city's infrastructure, like I know that the building, you know, the current building you're in, it, it, there's like cracks in the, in the building and the foundation and everything, but it has to go for the infrastructure for the city, you know, to where I'm just, I, I, it, it's part of the solution, you know, if, if, like I said, if, if actually we could get a, you know, one of the big ones out of, out of Michigan that came and they grew here, they could claim that they grew it out of Lake Michigan. You know, I'm just trying to come up with a way, and I'm not saying that this is the, the answer to the problem.
Sure.
But it's definitely something to consider.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem. That, that's where we use the citizens' comment portion of our, but thank you.
Well, I, I think in the first time at the meeting.
Yep.
I've been a union member for 37 years. General Roberts Rule of Order is, you know, kind of at the end of the meeting and not trying to disrupt anything or anything, but I was just trying to make a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll address that before we adjourn real quickly. So within six, seven years ago, we had been working with a, a company that wanted to put a medicinal marijuana facility down in that area. The state awarded it to Aurora and their, they didn't fit with all of the regulations, we did. We fought that for several years because we understood that, that would change and help us quite a bit. We also, as a city council, pretty forward-thinking, knowing the history of the city, put in an ordinance to allow for dispensaries. However, a lot of the dispensaries were awarded to different suburbs or different municipalities here. So we have been down that road. We continue to work with business development and bringing in different businesses here. In fact, in about two weeks, we go out to Vegas for a retail conference where we, we talked to businesses about coming here. Six years ago, we didn't have a Starbucks. Six years ago, Starbucks said they wouldn't come to Zion. We've changed things enough that Starbucks is here now. Real Wheels, a multi-billion dollar company, moved from Gurnee, moved their port, headquarters from Gurnee to Zion. So we appreciate your suggestion and the solutions. Trust me, we are, been very forward-thinking. Our council has been great in that regard in making suggestions and listening to our ci, our, our residents as well. So the next time we have a, we've been having quarterly meetings with our residents. And I don't know, we haven't scheduled the next one, but those are times when we, we get the taxing bodies together and we invite our residents to ask us questions and to make suggestions, because those are the things that as much as... Because those are the things that as much as we talk about issues within the city, maybe there's something that we've missed. So we look to our residents to come up with creative, creative ideas, much like you, you talked about. And we've already, we're exploring those that we have that might be something that we've overlooked. So thank you for coming tonight and thank you for your comments. So Madam Clerk, we had the motion to adjourn and a second and we're having a roll call.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Stackhouse?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor Kinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for coming and, and driving.